Evening, and thank you all for joining us with the San Juan County Commissioners Candidates Night. This is technically a function of the Silverton Standard Newspaper. They've done this for decades. And me, Deanne Gallegos, the Executive Director of the Silverton Chamber of Commerce, is the moderator for the evening. So we've had a partnership between Silverton Standard and Chamber of Commerce for many years. We'd like to thank the Town of Silverton for being a very gracious host and having us this evening. It shows true partnership between all entities and definitely town and county. And especially you, Nathan, for being the Oz behind technology tonight. So how this event is gonna work? We are not gonna go past 8:00 PM, but we may end early. So there's a gamut of questions that would go beyond 8:00, but we're gonna get through as many as we can. The candidates will have anywhere from two minutes to one-minute timed opportunity to all answer the same questions. And we just did a random draw where someone is gonna answer first, and then we're always gonna move to the right. So not every person always answers first, and not all every person always answers last. So how do these questions come to be this evening? We've had advertisements, emails, communications, conversations, and we collected community feedback, comments, topics, and then dump it into Excel spreadsheet list, look for what rose to the top, took some direct questions from Silverton Standard Editor wrote one, a nonprofit director, some leadership, and then community. And then looking for the patterns of the themes of what this community-driven event is about, then we crafted some questions to encompass those kind of topics of concern for citizens. So to begin this evening, each candidate is gonna be able to introduce themselves and give what their platform for running for this commissioner seat is. That is gonna be a two-minute time. So because we're gonna go back and forth between two-minute and one-minute opportunities, I will give these gentlemen what the question is, what the time limit is gonna be, and then I'm gonna hit the timer. I ask that you be respectful of the timer. You don't have to use all your time, but please do not go beyond your time. So we are gonna start with the draw this evening, Manuel Scow. So Manny, if you can introduce yourself and give your platform, and we're gonna start now.
My name's Manuel Scow. I've lived in Silverton for part of the last five decades. I've been in Silverton for 20 years this time. I moved here the first time in 1986. My dad was a miner. My mom was a waitress. I started Kettle Mountain Cafe 12 years ago, $1,500 to my name. So if working on a shoestring budget is something the commissioners need, I got that down. I'm an independent candidate. I don't have an R or a D by my name. So that means I'm willing to listen to all sides, speaking and listen to all sides for all the answers. Speaking of answers, I don't have all the answers. I don't, I don't know everything. There might be some times tonight where you hear me say, "I don't know. I'm gonna have to look into it." That's not, that's, that's, that's just who I am. The people that know me know that I'm a great listener. I'm dedicated. I, if I start something, put my mind to it, I finish it. Also, good at researching. If you have a question, if I become your county commissioner, you have a question, swing by the cafe, stop by the kitchen, you say, "Hey, I need to know something." I'll have an answer for you by the, by the end of the week. So, thank you.
Mr. Mizel.
Hi, I'm Pete Mizel. I came to Southwest Laurel in 77 for Fort Lewis. Got a degree, political science. Worked on the railroad from 85 to 98, which half that, half that railroad is on in San Juan County. And then I was in hospitality business with the hotel, with hotels and other things for a while. I actually served on the town board here for four years. I, I'm here to serve the, try to serve the San Juan County the best I can. I'm not Mr. San Juan County. I don't know everything, but if I don't have an answer to a question tonight or a future question, I feel I have the resources, I can find that, the answer to that question within, you know, an hour or so. So if I can't answer a question, I, I promise to answer it later.
Mr. Coleman.
My name is Ernie Coleman. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
You know, I'm rerunning for another term as county commissioner. I've been your county commissioner for not going on nine terms. And we started out in the beginning with a set of rules and regulations. We never had much in the beginning. I have done many things in this town. I have been in the trucking business for many, many years. I have been a county commissioner for about 34 years. I've served on many boards for many years. And I wanna be a county commissioner. I wanna be your representative. Because there's some things that we need to take down and look at. It's not progressing very fast.
Thank you.
Mr. Lannis.
Thank you, Deanne. And thanks to you and the Silverton Standard miner for organizing this event tonight. And to the Town of Silverton, thanks Nate for hosting us. And I wanna thank everyone here that's in person tonight and those of you watching from home. Because I believe that local government is important. And I appreciate you guys taking the time to learn about me and everyone else here tonight that's running as county commissioner, represent you as San Juan County's next county commissioner. And my name's Charles Alex Lannis, and I love San Juan County. This place has been part of me for my entire life. I love our back country. I love Silverton. I love the people that live here, most of them. And, and the people that visit here. I love our winters and I love our summers. I love our past and our history, and I'm hopeful for our future. But one thing I learned a long time ago is that hope and love in itself isn't enough. If we really wanna improve our community and the lives of our neighbors, you gotta put the work in. Because we can't solve the housing crisis or advocate for our businesses, our residents, and our back country if I'm only showing up to meeting every two weeks. And we can't improve the efficiency and transparency of our local government if the people elected don't think there's a need or they don't understand the tools, technologies of a 21st century government. As commissioner, I plan on tackling these issues and many more by treating the position like the job it is. I've been doing this in my campaign. I've been working my butt off to meet with you, as many as you as possible, to learn about the things that you care about most. I've spent hundreds of hours researching other communities that have responded to issues similar to ours. And since I started this campaign, I've attended every single county commissioner meeting so that when I'm elected, I don't have to worry about trying to catch up. And I can immediately get to working with you. So with that, thank you very much for your trust and being part of this community, and I look forward to your vote in November.
All right. First question, we're gonna start with you, Mr. Mizel. And this is two minutes. What do you think is the three top priorities of San Juan County? And what is your role as a commissioner in accomplishing those?
Uh, three, I think. Trying to find some more, some, some, some housing county and, and that goes into the city, the housing. I think we're helping our road and bridge. Think there's gonna be a, a real situation going on there with, with Louis and Dave, the partners pretty soon, and keeping those roads open. And also, you know, figuring out the MAG Florida situation for, for the dust control. And I think one of the other ones is, you know, is super fun. I think we need to, we've been partners with these guys for a long time, but I think we need to keep them accountable. And I think, you know, I guess the big three, I think, that I can think of.
Mr. Coleman, top three priorities and your role.
Well, we have a lot of priorities in San Juan County, and we almost have less now than we used to have because we don't have the money we used to have either. Now, we're looking, as Pete has said, you know, it mining is no longer viable in San Juan County. Most of our expense and time is to put in tourism and recreation. I think the road, the road department needs more attention than it's been getting. And that's, that takes money. We need to get a water truck on those roads so that they're not dusty. That's, thank you.
Mr. Lannis.
I think it's really clear in San Juan County, Silverton, San Juan County, even South County, housing is our number one issue. I have friends that live here or lived here for their entire lives that all of a sudden have to move out because their landlord decides to sell their house and they're, they have nowhere to go. And our local government and our businesses are struggling to find, struggling to find employees because there's just nowhere for people to live. And so as a county commissioner, I think our number one priority is try to figure out in any way we can how to resolve our housing crisis. I think another huge issue and a part of the job of the county commissioner is advocating for our community. A part of that is what Pete Mizel said, Mr. Mizel, excuse me, about, you know, making sure to hold EPA accountable, but also hold the BLM accountable and, and the Forest Service for maintaining our back country. And again, advocating for San Juan County and making sure that we have a seat at the table for our regional governments, our state governments, and the federal government. And I think another top issue is definitely healthcare. You know, just the other day, we learned that the urgent care in Purgatory has permanently, permanently closed, which means that not just us here in Silverton, but also people in South County. Now, even though that place was only open generally in the winters, but now we just have additional lack of, of healthcare options for people here in San Juan County. As county commissioner, I think it's my job to make sure we can figure out a way we can recruit a full-time healthcare provider here. Thank you.
Mr. Scow.
Top three, affordable housing, courting cottage industry and transparency. I think affordable housing, I don't exactly know how we, how we create affordable housing when the country hasn't figured out how to create affordable housing, but maybe change the tech, tax structure. If you own a house, you live in it two weeks out of the year, you pay more taxes than the rest of us. We use that money for funding for affordable housing. And I prefer workforce housing. I think the apartment that was built by the county was, was great. But we could use more, you know, one in 20 years might not be enough to keep up with, with growth. Two cottage industry, I think we need to court small businesses. We need five, 10 more of the Sasquatch campers. You know, five or 10 more of those, that brings 50 more employees, that brings kids to school, kids at school, create community. The best way to do that is probably tax rebates. I don't think, I don't think Amazon moved to Texas because Texas is awesome. I think Amazon moved to Texas because Texas has tax rebates. That's plain and simple, and transparency speaks for itself. Thanks.
Thank you. This is a quick one-minute fire round. And we are gonna start with Mr. Coleman.
What did you say?
This is a one-minute quick answer one. What made you decide to run for county commissioner this year?
I've been doing it for a long time. Have a lot of background and efficiency for the public.
Mr. Lannis.
You know, Manny just talked about transparency, and that was actually one of the main reasons why I decided to run as county commissioner. You know, even when things are happening nefariously with our county, because things are so non-transparent, sometimes things just feel fishy, even if they're not. And I'm running for county commissioner, and sometimes I have a hard time figuring out what's going on in county. And so transparency was a big reason why I decided to run for county commissioner. But in that process, I've also got to talk to a lot of different people and learn a lot more about the county and learn about the other issues that people feel like are super important here as well.
Mr. Scow.
It's a short story. So I was, I was playing cards at the cafe, and a friend of mine showed up early before the game, and he's tied to an organization in town. He started telling me all the problems that they're having. And I listened to him, and we played our card game, and midnight or so, everyone's leaving. Another friend from another organization in town that, you know, these two organizations don't actually get along with each other, told me the same problems. They actually, the exact same problems, but these two groups can't talk together, but they can talk to me. So I thought, hey, it's time to run for county commissioner.
Mr. Mizel.
With my job in, with my little excavation, I'm out in the county at least two or three times a week. And because of that, I, I see whether it's Forest Service, BLM, EPA, ER, you name it, I see all, in Serra, the water treatment plant, I'm out amongst these guys all the time, and I see what's going on, the boots-on-the-ground thing. And I thought to myself, you know, you, I think that in, in my relationship with the, with the road and bridge department, I think I could, I could really benefit the county by running.
All right, we're gonna go back to a two-minute opportunity in this next question, and we're gonna start with Mr. Lannis. What is your understanding of what the shared services are between San Juan County and Silverton? And how well do you think it's working? Or what improvements in that agreement are needed?
Sure, thank you. So, you know, Silverton and San Juan County have a really special relationship. We are the only incorporated community in San Juan County. And a ton of our services are shared, our building department, our planning department, the historical review board for right, for the, for right now is shared between county and town. And some of these areas, you know, I don't wanna be specific, but you know, I feel like some of these areas are working, some of these areas can be improved. I think that for now and eternity, there will always be a special relationship between San Juan County and Silverton. And I think we will always have, have to be relying on each other for different services for a bunch of different reasons. But you know, i- if there's an instance where all of a sudden we lose some of our institutional knowledge and our capability at county level, we're gonna have to rely on individuals in town to kind of pull the slack while, while we at county try to figure out how to move forward. As county commissioner, I would like to explore the future relationship with the Town of Silverton and see where areas that we can cooperate on, and then also identify areas that we, where we need to stay separate.
Mr. Scow.
The first thing I can think of is the, the budget with the sheriff's department. That's always an argument between the county and the town, who's, who's gonna pay more out of that. But I think being the only town in San Juan County, they're, they're just, they're connected in a way that you can't separate it. They're both, they're, they're just, it's one thing, and to work together is the only way to get to move forward. So cooperation is definitely necessary for, for the grouping of the town and the county.
Mr. Mizel.
Shared services, I think both of these guys have brought up good points. Whether it be, you know, the sheriff's department or, or the, the, the healthcare, whatever. I mean, I think right now, we're doing a pretty good job with it. I think there's probably a few places we could probably approve. But I think, you know, we, they've talked also about combining town and, and, and county with like, with the road department, public works. I don't, I think that needs to be kept separate. But I think going back to, but he said the sheriff's department, I mean, I, I think there's some real room for improvement on that, you know. How, how we can maybe cover the county better with the sheriff's department? Things like that, so.
Coleman.
You know, shared service. When I came here and started in politics, we didn't have shared services. We had a chief of police and a sheriff. And they all, they both had their own cars. And the it's not an opportunity at that time to go ahead and combine these things, which has worked out pretty well. Are we getting much for our service in the sheriff's department? Not as much as I think we need to be getting. We've got probably more sheriffs now than we have ever had here. And I still hear you people yelling about no, not enough service. And I think that's one thing I would push, shared services on equipment, it doesn't work out real well.
So this is a one-minute question, and we're gonna start with Mr. Scow. As a commissioner, how would you approach supporting economic diversification in the county while maintaining historic and environmental preservation?
This was the second of my three most important things in, in, in San Juan County is supporting cottage industry. Like I said earlier, I think the Sasquatch campers is probably the best version that we've had of that since we've been here. Snowboards too, that was, that was great. But the only way to get someone to move here is you have to give them incentive to be here. And by that, I, the only thing I can come up with right now is tax incentives.
Mr. Mizel.
Repeat the question.
As a commissioner, how would you approach supporting economic diversification in the county while maintaining historic and environmental preservation?
I think, you know, one of the, one of the biggest things is, and we're, they, they claim anyway, that we actually getting fiber to the home. I think things like this, I mean, expanding our broadband, getting, getting actual fiber to the home, into the businesses, because you're seeing a whole lot more people working from home. And, and that's another way to grow the county is to have these folks that can work virtually come here and work. I agree with a, a, some, some more, a little more industry, a little light industry, like, like the campers, the campers and whatnot is a good thing. We even talked about doing a, you know, a small, small data center here because of the, 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 the security we have here, so.
Mr. Coleman.
Well, you know, we need votes. We had mining for many years here. And that brought us 200 kids to this school and a lot of programs that we don't have anymore. I think we're about, what, 76 kids or so in the, in the whole school realm. That, that, that's a problem, but I find people that they can find a job here, but they can't find a place to live. And what do you do about that? The county's gone about as far as it can go by building the Anvil Mountain Subdivision. It takes money, and it takes grants. And I'm hoping that that will improve as we go on. Thank you.
Lannis.
Well, so, you know, we are at a, Silverton and throughout the country has a remarkable opportunity because we can diversify our economy, and our economy is diversifying because of the post-COVID world where people are working from home, and we, we've already seen this. Families, many families have moved into San, San Juan County, Silverton, because they're able to work from home, and they're no longer living in places like Denver or Dallas or Phoenix. And, but the, the main, the main thing that's preventing economic diversification right now isn't that we're, for me, I don't believe it's that we're not bringing people in, it's just, again, it's housing, just like Ernie talked about. There's not places for people to live. And even if higher, you know, upper-middle or higher-income people can live here, then we start having a shortage of the service industries, the people that are working at grocery stores and our restaurants and bars to be able to serve our middle-income people that. So again, focus on housing, I think would be the number one resolution for economic diversification.
This is a two-minute question, and we will be starting with Mr. Mizel. The county has significant issues around access to healthcare services. And we are among the most medically underserved counties in Colorado. What is your ideas for addressing this community need?
Okay. I actually think it seems like since Kevin Holland came in and, and now it's Tyler George, I think what they've done with, with the EMS and the paramedic is taken it from this level to this level. So I don't always, I, I don't really totally agree with how underserved we are. I mean, we don't have a hospital, and like he said, the urgent care is, is no longer open, but I mean, yeah, they, they could, needs to be researched and looked at. But I think the, the, the day-to-day things are, are, to, to, for emergency services is actually decent. Actually, healthcare to get doctors and, and, and a hospital up here, it's, yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's possible or not.
Mr. Coleman.
This has been a big problem in San Juan County and in Silverton for a long time. Been many years since we had a resident doctor here, and then the next phase was a doctor that was subsidized for two days a week. Then he left. And we're lucky to be doing what we're doing. We have a county healthcare nurse, very qualified. We have a good staff at the hospital. The county put in a lot of money in the hospital to make it functional. And what can we do? I don't know. We certainly can't appropriate enough money to put in a full, full-time doctor here. But we gotta have something. I go to Agnes and she said she can't do something. Well, that's true because she's not a full physician. And I still have to go out of town. Thank you.
Lannis.
So the lack of a full-time healthcare provider here in San Juan County is a huge detriment to our economy and the health and safety of, of all of us here. And it's one of my number-one campaign issues. And I, I feel like as a county commissioner, it's my job to try to be recruiting a full-time healthcare practitioner here to Silverton and San Juan County. And I, I honestly believe that we have the market, that we have a market for a full-time healthcare provider. If, you know, we have, we have the facilities already at, at the, at where the clinic is. If we can work with our county health department and work with our county administrator and our county government to come up with a plan to try to recruit a full-time healthcare provider that can be in our clinic and we can provide them that space, and not just a full-time healthcare provider, but also maybe a telemedicine center to where, under, under their supervision, we can have, our, our residents here in San Juan County can have access to all sorts of healthcare, not just your basic primary care. You know, our EMS services are amazing here, and we're very lucky to have them. But it's, it's, it's about time that we have a full-time healthcare provider in San Juan County.
Mr. Scow.
Grants, I think that's the only way to do it. There's money out there for these sort of things. I actually didn't know that the clinic being underfunded was a problem until I started running for county commissioner because I, I just assumed it was, they were doing a good job. I see, I agree with Pete, I see the EMS is doing an absolutely amazing job for how large the county is. But we have to find a way to put more money into the clinic, and I guess that would be through grants. I, I have no idea how we find $150,000 to pay a doctor to be here all the time, but you know, that would, that would be amazing.
Yeah.
This will be a two-minute question, and we're gonna start with Mr. Coleman. Can you please explain your general philosophy or approach to land use policies? In particular, do you agree with the countywide use subject to review land use? In particular, do you agree with the countywide use subject to review land use policy?
That's what we now have. And I hear many people yelling about, you know, I've got land up there where I can't use it. And that happens. And we're going to continue having that, we have to regulate the land and what goes on it. You know, land's a big part of this county. You're not making any more of it here. But I'll tell you. We need to do something seriously about this. We have talked about changing the tax situation in, in San Juan County. Will that we could get some money and, uh, perhaps expand our low-income housing program. I don't know an answer to it, I wish I did. It's the thing, the doctors, they like to make money. And they have to look at the bottom line and say, can I make a living in San Juan County? And uh, I don't blame them, they've got to make, make it. Thank you.
Bill Lannis.
So no, I don't think our current land use, uh, regulations, uh, are working for, I mean, maybe parts of San Juan County, but not all of San Juan County, uh, for a bunch of reasons, different reasons. One, you know, we're in the midst of a housing crisis. Uh, and, uh, and we're limiting any sort of housing development uh, everywhere in the county, uh, by not having any sort of use by right. Uh, you know, in our urban corridors, uh, adjacent to Silverton and in South County, uh, people who have property should have at least some right to be able to do something with that property. Uh, I also, I totally understand the other side of the argument in protecting our backcountry and we can do things like follow the lead of counties like Douglas County, uh, that has instituted, um, you know, uh, used by right. But is also, um, put their money where their mouth is and protecting their backcountry by purchasing, uh, conservation easements and land for permanent compensation, not just holding up um, land use, uh, regulate, in, with, with regulations and telling people that they can never do anything ever with their land. And on the, on the, uh, other end of it too, you know, when everything is going through the county commissioners for every single decision on land use. Um, for one, that just comes up the system, it, everything takes so much longer to get anything done. But then, you know, even if the county commissioners aren't doing anything wrong, people in the county are questioning, they're like, well, why did this project get approved but this one didn't? And that shouldn't happen, we, we should take the guessing game out of it. County commissioners shouldn't be responsible for approving or, or not approving every single project in this county.
Mr. Scout.
Um, I think that the subject review is, is semi, I mean, sort of important, we, I mean, you can't just uh, build a giant pink house right on the side of the road and, you know, hope that someone's, you know, someone's not going to do it, but I, I, I'm, I'm for, uh, I'm for opening it up more. I know too many people that have property that they can't build on. And it's, it's ridiculous that, that you're, you're, when you create all these different rules and all these different fees and red tape and everything to build on your property. You just took a giant segment of the population, the poor, and made sure that they can't build. So now, who can build in the county? Millionaires? People that are rich, people that have plenty of money to build? Um, I think that it's just fair to try to open it up to a lot of people.
Mr. Mizel.
I think the land use, I, I, I agree with a, a lot of it. Um, but I, I do remember when, um, it, uh, and, and, and I'm all for responsible development. I mean, no one here, I don't think, wants to see, ever see a mountain village here, here in, in this county, you know, we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to emulate Tyler Rider or Ray or anybody else, you know, we are who we are. And I think it's super important to, uh, keep our historic, you know, heritage intact. But I do believe that, basically, I mean, I think that the land use process right now is four meetings. It used to be, uh, two meetings, one, one planning commission meeting, one BLCC meeting. To me, that can be streamlined back down to two meetings, it's still two times. Uh, you have the opportunities to say no if you find conditions that aren't work, that aren't working or anything else, but I think four-meetee process and six months to, to wear people down, I don't agree with.
This is kind of a part two, quick one-minute round to this continued subject and we're going to start with Mr. Lannis. Would you approve or deny different types of land use proposals under the review of Board of County Commissioner?
Would I repeat, would I re, can you repeat the question, sorry?
You approve or deny different types of land use under the Board of County Commissioner?
Um, so, uh, so if I'm county, when I'm county commissioner, um, again, I would, I would like to see more opportunity, uh, by use by right, uh, especially in our urban areas of our county. Uh, and, uh, whether I would approve or deny, um, you know, if there's a, if there's a packet coming up or a project coming up in the county. Um, if it's following our current county use regulations, I would have, I would, I feel like I would have the duty to approve um, uh, uh, any sort of dev- development that's, that's happening in our county that's following the rules.
Mr. Scout.
Um, yeah, I, uh, I mean, without seeing what that project was, I don't think you can answer the question, so. I, I don't see myself, uh, saying no to a lot of things. I see myself saying mostly yes, but, uh, you know, unless someone has the plans in front of you, there's no way to say yes or no to it.
Mr. Mizel.
Approving or denying, I mean, that, that, that's kind of an open question. Like, like Manuel said, each case is each case, okay? And you, you have to go, uh, upon the, the, the county developmental standard and, and historical view and everything else. So you, you, uh, you approve and deny case, case by case and, and each issue by each issue.
Mr. Coleman.
Well, you know, we are probably one of the most regulated counties in the state. We got regulations for about everything. You know, Silverton was set up and planted on a one-lawn basis, twenty-five feet. That didn't work out well because there wasn't room to fight fires between the facilities. So we ended up with two lots. And that's what we have now. Uh, to expand, I can't see us doing much more than a month, than two lots, because we need to, uh, we need to be able to get in there and service those, those places. So that's one thing. Yeah. That's enough for now, thank you.
We're going to go back to a two-minute and we're going to start with, um, your scout. In your opinion, what is the current relationship with San Juan County in the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, around the Benita Peak Superfund and where do you see a need for improvement?
Um, well, I think that, um, we can pretend like that, that, that we have a say in what goes on with the federal government, but, um, they're going to make their decisions. And, uh, um, I can stand, I can stand here and say, well, you know, I think the super fund is, is, is bullshit, or sorry, the super fund is, uh, that I'm not for the super fund. But when the EPA comes in, the federal government comes down and says, this is what we're going to do, that's what they're going to do.
Mr. Mizel.
That's a, that's a great question. Um, again, like I said earlier, we've been partnered with these, these, uh, with the EPA and, and, uh, B eleven is up since, since the super fund inception, but again, I think they need to be, we need to really hold them accountable. Okay? Um, I can remember clear back, uh, when Scott and I were on the oversight committee, uh, when I was in town council and, and we decided on forty-eight sites. And some of that's gone by the wayside. They also, they also said we're, we're going to have a cooperative agreement, you guys remember that? It didn't happen. So, I, I mean, uh, to me, I think, I think we, we need to hold their feet to fire, ma- make, make, make them all accountable.
Mr. Coleman.
You know, we've been working with the EPA for many years. When we had the mine spell at the Gold King, they came in and took, pretty much took charge of the situation. And, uh, uh, remedied to the best of their ability for the time. Are they hard to work with? Uh, my way or no way with them. We have worked with them at the best of our ability and I think they will continue working with us and I hope they do. They've had a, been a good source of revenue. Uh, that's all, thank you.
Mr. Lannis.
So when I first started this campaign, uh, my view is very similar, similar to how Mr. Scout, uh, said, you know, the EPA is going to do what the EPA is going to want to do. Uh, and talking to people, this is an issue that a lot of people, uh, have problems with. Uh, and I think it's the job of the commissioner to, uh, to, uh, like, like Mr. Mizel said, to hold them accountable. Uh, and, and, and doing that, it's, uh, by making sure you're sitting on those boards and you have a seat at the table, the EPA uh, and other federal government agencies that are dealing with, uh, that, that are working here in San Juan County. You know, I have friends that are working for the EPA here in San Juan County. And, and they're open to, uh, what we have to say here, uh, as county commissioners. Uh, it's just that if there's no one, if there's no county commissioner that's sitting at the table and talking to them and making sure that they're held accountable, they are going to do whatever they want to do. Uh, and so as county commissioner, I will make sure, um, that, uh, San Juan County and Silverton uh, and all the residents here, uh, have something to say for, uh, the EPA and that we have a better idea of what's going on there because I will be having meetings with them and I'll be sitting down with them and I'll make sure that, um, uh, that they're held accountable.
This is kind of a second part to this question and we're going to start with Mr. Mizel and it's a one-minute. What is your opinion on the current status, the Benita Peak Superfund?
Uh, well, I'll be honest with you, after seven years, um, uh, they're, they're back to the, uh, 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 as far as, as far as cleaning up our water in Cement Creek, I'm not impressed. Um, I, I haven't seen, I mean, they've done, done, done lots of remediation and, and removal, but, and, and, and worked on lots of sites. But, uh, again, I'm, I'm, you know, right now, it, in seven years, I'm not really impressed with the data that I'm seeing with, with, uh, cleaning, cleaning up the, the water that they're, that, that they were, they came in here to do. Um, I'm also, I know for a fact that the, the, in Sarah of the Water Treatment Plant, they only, they're only, uh, using one clarifier and, and they're cleaning up, uh, one side that there's, they cleaned up the American Tunnel water and letting the mogul in the, the Red Benita water, which used to be their poster child, they're, they're, that, that's plumbed and, and pumped in, uh, ready, ready to go in, in there and, and they're not even, uh, they're not even cleaning it.
Mr. Coleman.
Well, you know, the EPA was handed this. In fact, the county went in with the EPA and asked them to supervise this situation. And they have. The problem with them seems to be that no more do we get a good director here that understands, then they retire. I think they're putting, putting people up here that are terminal. Can they do more? Yes, they can. Do they need to keep the county in the loop? And, uh, I think I'm running short, thank you.
Mr. Lannis.
Well, look, I'm not an expert on mine reclamation. Uh, so, you know, all I can do, uh, as county commissioner when I'm elected is make sure I'm sitting at the table and listening to them and then reaching out to individuals in our, in our community that care about this issue and talk to them about the issue as well and get everyone at the table and making sure that, um, that the process that, that, you know, at Gladstone and, and throughout the county, um, is, is held accountable. Uh, look, everywhere throughout our county has mine waste. Uh, there's not a, there's not a, a piece of dirt here that doesn't have some sort of, uh, mine waste on and it's going to take hundreds of years if ever to clean up. Um, uh, but, uh, as long as we have accounting commi- county commissioners that are sitting at the table uh, and talking with the EPA and the other environmental agencies, uh, both state, regional and federal here in town. Um, I think that's a good first step, uh, but I can't really comment on, uh, the process there because I'm just.
Mr. Scout.
The question again, please.
What is your opinion on the current status of the Benita Peak Superfund?
So, uh, Ernie said it was handed to the EPA, but I believe it was the EPA that caused it. Um, I've, I've heard, uh, is that right? Am I right about that? Um, I've heard both, uh, I, I, yeah, yeah, I don't know, I don't, this is one of those I don't knows. Um, I've heard that the water coming out of there is horrible, I've heard the water coming out of there is cleaner than when the youths had it. Um, I, I, I don't really have an answer for how it's being ran, to be honest.
So this is a, uh, two-minute question and we are going to start with Mr. Coleman. What does transparency in government mean to you as a potential commissioner? And where do you see an improvement for it or not?
Transparency. To me, that's involving the public with what's going on in the community, whether it be city or county. And, uh, you know, there's, everybody has an opinion. Even the commissioners, they have an opinion. And they represent the, the people that back them into that office. I think we're doing pretty well with the public opinion, so. We're never going to get the, uh, EPA to accept all this and let me say, Gold becomes a partner in this stuff. And we have to be very careful with what we do with them. And I suggest that we have proper authority to do so, thank you.
Bill Lannis.
Transparency in govern- government for me means that regular people have easy access to know what's going on, uh, in their, in their government. Uh, and, uh, like I said, this is one of the reasons why I decided to run for office. Uh, I feel like it, at our county level government, even when there's not stuff going on, uh, that's wrong, it can feel like it and people are frustrated because they don't know what's going on and they don't have access. You know, um, I, I think the easiest way to do that is making sure that all of our documents online are easily accessible. You know, we haven't had county meeting minutes posted on the county website since May. Um, and as county commissioner, I'm going to make sure those stuff, that stuff changes and not, and not just, um, our county minutes, but also making sure they're searchable, making sure that our, our meetings are easily accessible. Um, our planning commission meetings are easily accessible, are recorded and that anyone that wants to have access to that can or, and, and, you know, this is almost every community in Colorado does this already. Um, and, and so this isn't a stretch, this isn't, I know there's been pushback and some people in county and say, oh, well, you know, we, we don't want to, the, the liability or the risk, but this is a pretty standard practice all throughout the United States and all throughout Col- Colorado. Uh, making sure we have our contracts online, um, our minutes, everything easily accessible so that people in San Juan County aren't questioning, um, what we're doing as county commissioners and, and aren't thinking we're doing something wrong.
Mr. Scout.
Um, the public needs to be involved in, in every part of government openness. Um, the ability to reach out, touch, talk to your, uh, your county commissioners, your, um, public officials is very important. I think this, this is incredibly important, I, 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 I work a lot. I spend a lot of time in a kitchen and, uh, for, I don't know, fifteen years, I didn't make it to a lot of meetings. But now, I can finish cooking and watch YouTube and I catch everything, so I think what he does is very important.
Mr. Mizel.
I think it's, I think there's good points all, all been said here, I think it comes down to transparency, comes down to good old-fashioned honesty with, 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 with the whole public and, and how things are working, so. Um, again, like you said, people being involved with, with every facet of the, the government, all the meetings, everything else being transparent with that.
All right, we're going to go to a one-minute and we're going to start with Mr. Lannis. What is your understanding of the San Juan County budget and where is its strengths and weaknesses?
And where is it what?
Your, the strengths and the weaknesses.
Well, so I've, I've read through it, uh, several times. Uh, and you know, I've been treasurer, uh, for several different organizations, I've been finance manager. Uh, and so when it comes to budgeting, I have a ton of experience in it. Um, as far as the weaknesses and, and strengths of our county budget, I haven't sat down in those budgeting meetings. Uh, and, and in order to really understand, um, our San Juan County budget, other, I, I just, I, unless I've sat down in those budgeting meetings, um, I just can't comment on just a bunch of numbers on papers from what I've read.
Mr. Scout.
Um, I've also looked at it a few times and I have to agree with you one hundred percent, I'm not going to the budget means. I, I have, I literally have no idea, um, what the paperwork actually means. I mean, I ran a restaurant for twelve years, it's a lot easier than, uh, than running a county, I guess, but, uh, um, budget, I'd have to go to the budget means also to be able to say.
Mr. Mizel.
Yeah, I'm going to say, I'm kind of. Yeah, I'm going to say, I'm kind of echo what you said. Not being in meetings yet, not being a commissioner yet, not being, I, I've been to several meetings and listening to, to what, what, what they're going through. I mean, I know the road and bridge needs more money and, and and so that, that might be a weakness, but, but not being right there with, with Willie and people going through the budget, I really, I don't think I can answer it properly.
Mr. Coleman.
You know, I think Silverton, San Juan County has done very well for what it is and the money that they have kept. We have one of the finest paramedic and ambulance groups in the state for our size. We have one of the best fire departments in the state for our size and the best equipped. So if you don't know, believe, just run around and look at other people's stuff. We're trying to keep that level of service up for you folks. And me. Thank you.
This is going to be a one minute and we're going to start with Mr. Scout. What is your opinion on the San Juan County Tourism Tax Ballot Measure that's going to be on the November ballot? Where we switch the tourism tax fund to potentially also support affordable housing experience for our guests as well as marketing?
Yet, yet again, I haven't spent a ton of time looking at that, but can you read the question one more time?
So what is your opinion on the San Juan County Tourism Tax Ballot Measure that will be on our November ballot? So we're moving it potentially from just marketing to encompassing portable housing, marketing as well as customer experience opportunities.
This is one minute. This is one minute.
Yes.
So I guess for, like, yet again, I haven't read, I haven't read the whole ballot measure to be honest. But if marketing to affordable housing is anywhere in the equation, then I guess I'm voting yes on it.
Mr. Mizel.
I'm going to plead that, that I need to research this and see, see where it's going. I, I, I'm not even, I'm not aware of it and, and need to research it and I, and I will and, and I can get you an answer later, but I can't answer it right now. I don't want to dance around it.
Mr. Coleman.
You know, I've been in the situation for many years. And we've came a long ways. You know, it was a desperate thing in the mine coal. And we had to realize, even old hard-headed people like me, we had to realize that tourism, mining's not going to be there anymore, guys. It's going to be tourism and recreation and let's put our effort into these things to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Mr. Lanis.
Oh, I generally like a tax that's specifically earmarked for a certain purpose, but definitely I feel like the tourism tax that we had that was earmarked specifically for marketing was way too specific. And if we can open up and, and the, the people here in San Juan County and Silverton decide to open that up to be able to spin up, but through other means, I think that's a great opportunity to utilize existing tax revenue on something that we, you know, on something that would have been spent on something that we didn't necessarily need. And now we can come together in our budgeting needs and figuring out new ways to spend tax money that we already have coming in and improve the programs that we, that we really think need to be improved without having to raise taxes.
So we're going to go back to a two-minute and we're going to start with Mr. Mizel. With recreation use increasing annually in San Juan County's backcountry, what is your philosophy about motorized and non-motorized use on county roads? And how do you plan to support the Road and Bridges Department who are the ones maintaining them?
I believe in multi-use on the, on these roads. So on that part, but, but I think, again, we go back to the road and bridge. I mean, we need to find whether, whether it's, it's, it's going to the EPA that I know they're going to, they're, they're going to be running sludge next year from Gladstone to Pond Four. I, I think we need to get some, some money from those guys or in, in different areas for, for the dust control and, and mag chloride. And any help we can give the road and bridge with that, I mean, that's 30 to 40,000 every year that, that we need to find and we need to get, possibly get from EPA or other sources.
Mr. Coleman.
You know, it's been a problem getting money. Everybody says there's plenty of it. I haven't seen plenty of it. But we still have to have and have to be able to provide services to our people. And I do it by priority. What's more important, footbridge or a fire truck? And I think we need to look at things in that, in that perspective. We can't have everything, guys. I wish we could.
Mr. Lanis.
So look, I, I feel like our backcountry, particularly the BLM areas north of, in our north part of our county, are public lands that are open for all sorts of different recreations. I love seeing people have fun, whether it's hiking, biking, fishing, you know, OHVs, jeeping. And, and I think we need to make sure that recreation is protected for all different kinds of recreation in our backcountry. It's totally obvious that, that different kinds of recreation can affect our backcountry differently. And, and there are negative impacts of OHVs and, and motorized vehicles. And that comes back down to also advocacy, making sure our county commissioners are, are, are making sure our sheriff's department, our law enforcement here in, in our county are enforcing our backcountry, but also making sure we have seat at the table, BLM and the Forest Service and the, the federal government who controls 89% of our county. And holding them accountable and making sure that they're helping fund us so that we can mitigate the issues that, that recreation has in our backcountry.
Mr. Scout.
Read it again, please.
With recreation use increasing annually in San Juan County's backcountry, what is your philosophy about motorized and non-motorized use on the county roads? And how do you plan to support the Roads and Bridges Department who are the ones maintaining them?
Well, I'm 100% for multi-use. I think that the hikers, the bikers, the fishermen like myself, hunters, quads, side by sides, they should have equal use to, to everything. I disagree with Ernie. I mean, I know he's been in government for a lot longer than me, but from what I've read, I think there is money out there. I think, I think a good grant writer is worth their weight in gold and you could get a lot done. Right now tourism is basically all we have until, you know, we start working on proper enough potting industries and, and, and diversifying. But multi-use is very important.
All right. So we are going to move to a quick one minute and we are going to start with you, Mr. Coleman. 86.7% of our, of San Juan County is federal lands. What is your understanding of our current relationship with our federal land managers, i.e. Forest Service and BLM? And where do you see improvement?
Well, that's true. We know that's federal land. That probably will come up. What do you do? They have rules and regulations also. And we can go to them and ask for something and we may not get it. And sometimes we do. Am I satisfied with what they're doing? Not necessarily, no. You know, they're a big part of our county and they will always be a big part of this county. And we have to try to get along with them to the best of our ability. But that works both ways. And I'll support it. Thank you.
Mr. Lanis.
Well, so, you know, since the BLM moved their, their regional office to Gunnison and, and our districts changed, things have made it, it's been a lot more difficult for both the BLM to know what's going on here in San Juan County and for, for them to manage our, our backcountry. And I'm sounding like a broken record here, but your job of the county commissioner is to be advocating for, for our county and making sure that we have a seat at the table when it comes to the BLM. As county commissioner, I'm going to be making sure that I'm, I'm meeting with the, those guys in, in the Gunnison office and, and the folks here regularly and, and advocating for our community and make sure that our backcountry, that I said 89% earlier, but I guess it's 86.7%. 86.7% of our county that's maintained by the federal government, that, that they're, that they're held accountable and they're doing their job. From trail maintenance, latrine maintenance, the campsite maintenance. And, and right now I just don't feel like they're holding their, their, their side.
Mr. Scout.
I'd agree with both, both Ernie and Alex. I don't think that the, the feds are actually doing what they should be doing in the county. But like Ernie said, you can, you can sit down, you can talk to them, you can, you can plead and cry and, and whine with the federal government and hopefully get something done, but in, in the end, it's, it's going to be their decision.
Mr. Mizel.
I, I agree with a lot what, what's, what's been said, but in, in the back of the BLM right now, I'm seeing some pretty disturbing things go on and, and with some of our local folks that are kind of trying to close down the backcountry a little more. And even, even their, their main company, prime company, Northwind, we had an episode last year where they put like 13, 12, 13 water bars on Arasta Road without the county permission. And the county then, then had to, then had to correct that. So I think they need to be watched and, and really held accountable.
All right. We are on the home stretch. I swear you're almost done with this. This is going to be a one-minute question also. And we are going to start with Mr. Lanis. What are your thoughts on the project of Baker's Park that Silverton Single Track is spearheading and what are the pros and cons of that project?
So I, I'm excited about Baker's Park. I think that's a huge opportunity for a ton of the cyclists and, and mountain bikers here in San Juan County. I think it's a huge economic activity, economic opportunity for us here in Silverton and throughout San Juan County. And those guys have spent a ton of work, volunteer, all free over the last, what, seven years to try to get Baker's Parks done. And certainly, you know, I recognize the, there's going to be environmental impact with anything we're doing in our county. But I, I'm going to support the men and women who have spent so much work and this labor love that they're trying to provide something cool for our community. You know, I'm a mountain biker myself and, and so maybe I'm a little biased, but I would like to have some cool trails like that as well.
Mr. Scout.
I absolutely love it. I think, I think it's a, it's a great opportunity to bring business to Silverton. Yeah, they have worked on it for a very long time and even though I'm not a biker, I, I, I understand that biking is a huge growth industry in America. That, that's one of the number one selling outdoor equipment right now is, is mountain bike. So anything in that department, I think is good for Silverton. I don't see any cons really.
Mr. Mizel.
I'm okay with it. I do want, and, and I know but I've seen a couple of meetings and I think Scott brought, President brought a good point up that you need to still be careful of the, the elk migration with some of these trails. So just again, keeping accountability on that. I, I think, I think it is good for the economy.
Mr. Coleman.
Well, you know, it's a hard one to do. We know we want to keep it under control. But we don't want to eliminate it. And sometimes the federal government, BLM, Forest Service only believe their own way and they're not very open-minded in some cases. We have a situation where we wanted to put a, a trail through Minnigolz into Deer Park, the Deer Park area. And that hasn't gone anywhere. It's still working. Are we going to get better with the BLM Forest Service? I don't know. As long as they keep retiring their people, they give us old people like me, so they're not there too long.
All right, this is our last question for the evening and then we're going to do closing statements and this is going to be two minutes and we are going to start with Mr. Scout. You're running to be county commissioner for all of San Juan County. Technically, this seat does represent South San Juan County, so that includes Cascade Village and all those neighboring communities. If elected, how do you plan to represent all communities in San Juan County? Not just Silverton. And how will all communities benefit from your leadership?
First off, isn't the, isn't the districting of, of the county ridiculous? Isn't it ridiculous that all three of us are running for one seat because we live in a block down there at the end of town? It makes absolutely no sense, right? We should be running for different seats right now. But anyways, I don't, I don't know a lot about what goes on down at Cascade, to be honest. I've spent most of my time up here in Silverton and I do plan on, I guess, going down there and doing some campaigning. So I will find out some issues that have to do with, that have to do with Cascade. And what was the other part of the question?
So how do you plan to represent all communities in San Juan County and how are they going to benefit from your leadership?
As been, as being a business owner for as long as I have and being in Silverton for as long as I have, I feel like I represent all sides of Silverton. My father was a miner. I, I live strictly off the tourism dollar, which my father also hated because he was a miner. And, and I think that I do a great job.
Mr. Mizel.
You know, like, I think being, being around and, and in the county, whether it's South County or North County, I, I think, I, I, if I don't know what's going on, I have the resources to find out to, to find out what's going on with people. People are, know I'm easy to talk to, easy to come to, easy to ask questions to. So I think I can represent all of them pretty easily, all groups.
Mr. Coleman.
Well, you know, Cascade Village has been there through all my tenure time. That old, that one time. And it was planned out at 148 units. They added a building about 88 because there are tax situations. They're coming up in the future. Cascade Village is proposing another 80 units there. How much impact is that going to have on Silverton, San Juan County? Now we have the Derangle Fire Department taking care of the, the fires down there for us. And law enforcement is still in the custody of the San Juan County Sheriff's Department. It's a real problem. And I think it's going to become a bigger problem as it grows. Thank you.
Mr. Lanis.
So you know, if you've been keeping up with my campaign, I've really tried to talk to people all throughout San Juan County. You know, most of everyone in San Juan County does live here in Silverton. So obviously most people that I'm talking to are from Silverton. But I've gone down to Cascade. I canvassed down at Cascade. I've talked to people and will know your neighborhood district and I, I, I've canvassed over in Cascade Village. You know, and just the, just at the last commissioner meeting, one of the representatives for, for the Cascade Village was complaining about just feeling lost and, and, and not having a good representation here in, in Silverton and San Juan County. As commissioner, you know, I, I've dedicated myself to trying to talk to as many people as possible throughout the county, not just here in Silverton. I plan on talking to more people in Cascade and hearing what the issues that, that they care about. And as them being in my district, while the vote is countywide, I feel like me in particular, as county commissioner, should be really focused on the issues that they are facing there and making sure that as county commissioner, I'm talking with them as much as possible.
All right, we did it. So now we're down to the one-minute closing statement and we are going to start with Mr. Mizel.
I just want to thank everybody here for coming. I think this was the, you know, thank, thank you for the venue and I think it was a good thing. I'm, as you can tell, I'm not a great public speaker. I don't speak that eloquently. I could just say this. Anybody that knows me knows I'm honest. They know they can approach me. And again, I'm going to say it again, I'm out in the county, so. And again, I'm going to say it again, I'm out in the county, so if I don't know the answer to a question and, and if I do get it opposite, I will be researching a lot of things, but I, I can, I can, I do have the resources to find out that answer for you. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman.
Well, you know, I've been in politics for many years. I still believe in them. I believe in Silverton and the people that live there. Trying to do the best for everybody. We've had bad times when the mines closed yet. But we need to go on and look into the future. Where are we going and what are we going to do? And it hasn't been totally answered yet. Thank you.
Mr. Lannister.
Look, we have a lot of major issues to tackle and it's going to take a lot of work. You know, the things we've talked about tonight from, from healthcare to housing crisis. These things are things that just can't be solved in county commissioner meetings alone. And we can't advocate for businesses and the residents here in Silverton and throughout San Juan County. We don't have seat at the table for organizations like CHAF or DOLA, Forest Service, BLM, CDOT or the EPA. And like I said, we are certainly not going to improve our transparency and efficiency of our government in our county. If we don't, if our elected leaders don't think there's a need or they don't understand how to use those tools of a 21st century government. And so I believe that, that my, that my experience and the work I put in this campaign, it speaks for itself. But I'll say, but I'll say it anyway. I'm going to, I'm prepared to work for you and treat the county commissioner position like a full-time job. Do we, was that two minutes?
This one.
Oh. I thought I had two minutes. Guys, thank you very much. You are amazing. I, I think I'm the best candidate ever for this district. But I think you are all equally passionate in your love for this community. I'm super proud to call you guys my neighbors and I look forward to our continued friendship and our professional relationships. So thank you and good night.
Thank everyone for coming. Thank you everyone for watching on YouTube. Make it quick because everyone looks forward. Affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing. Diversify the economy in the county, create an environment positive for cottage industry. Cottage industry creates, puts kids in the school, kids in the school create community. Expanding growth in the county is absolutely necessary. I think Silverton can be for all of us, the people still living here from the mining days, the new people that work from home, the business owners and the working class like myself, even the kids with giant trust funds. If we all work together, Silverton can be good for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming out this evening and answering these community driven questions and participating in the democratic process. And thank you guys for being on YouTube, Zoom and in our community. And I would ask that if you did not get your question answered this evening, or if this brought up more questions, that you absolutely come to these four gentlemen and ask them face to face. We don't know who we're voting for until we have these kind of conversations with people. So thank you again for coming this evening and thank you again, Nathan, for being the Oz for tonight's technology. Have a good evening.